All right, I'd like to call this meeting on November fourteenth to order at seven ten. Things that are on the agenda. Let's see. Really, do we want to go right into the text amendment, or do you want to? I guess, we're not going to go into executive session, cancel that. T. Oh yeah, if we're going to discuss. So, do I have a motion to take the text amendments for six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC off the table? Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, would you make a text amendment, six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates, six oh eight Ferry Boulevards, change the zone from a C eight, the zone to a proposed adaptive reuse, and six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates site plan review approval under proposal subsection twenty-nine of zoning regulations, off the table.
A motion by Mr. Hendrick, do I have a second by Mr. McCollough, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Well, outside of the fact of my displeasure of, out of the last meeting, that they really didn't change much in their proposal than I was hoping for. I'm not really satisfied to myself, anyway. Does anybody else have any other thoughts in regards to them, little? Ms. Phillips?
I was just going to comment, I was going to suggest that maybe we want to take them separately, only because I can see some benefits for an adaptive reuse housing zone in other places of the town. But we can have a different opinion on the other two if that, the discussion warrants it.
I would believe with all three off the table, you can discuss them separately.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve text amendment, six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates, for purposes of discussion.
A motion by Mr. Hendrick, do I have a second by Mr. Solhavy for discussion, all those in favor say aye. Whoa, whoa, yeah, no, never mind, under discussion. Debate, Ms. Phillips, you had something you wanted to add to that?
Only that, in the text amendment, that, in this particular case, we don't have enough housing units under five point three, this comes up all the time, we always are looking at opportunities or ways to be able to generate housing and yet control it. And, you know, I'm open to hear discussion, but it just seems that this is a text amendment that could be viable, not only in this particular property and whether it does, but also in other opportunities that we might want to put cluster, or small clusters of housing, if we don't want to address the fact of adding more units to five point three, which is really the basic problem why we get all these eight thirty G applications. And that was my comment.
Anyone else, Curtis Weedy? Mr. Hendrick?
I mean, it, it looks like with, you know, we're looking at, to make a major change, or substantial change to the zoning regulations through this, and I don't know, this is, you know, there's an eight thirty G application, I don't think that we necessarily need that they'll, and I kind of would maybe refer to the town attorney, but I don't believe that this, this text amendment change needs to be done in order to allow six oh eight Ferry Boulevard to go forward, so it's a change, but it's kind of the leading edge of, of the approval or denial, depending on how it goes, of, of the property, but I don't believe in order for them to develop the property, they would need this, this amendment, or this text change. Is that true?
Yeah, and eight dash thirty G doesn't require that you have a regulation that it complies with, an eight dash thirty G application doesn't, doesn't require a conforming regulation. It's just, you know, it can just be an application proposed separate and apart from a, from an amendment.
So I guess in my mind, it's, you know, it's maybe something we can take a look at, take a little deeper look into it. It's just, you know, just as far as, as the text change, but again, it doesn't, it isn't contingent, this project isn't contingent upon us changing it, you know, before we dive into this, which I think can be a significant change, I mean, we had a lot of discussion last month, or the beginning of the month, in the last month, about a text change. And, so I think we should maybe spend some time at another time going through this. But at this point, I don't know that I feel comfortable with approving this, especially being that it's not, that the project isn't contingent upon its approval or denial.
Mr. Solhavy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple comments on the, the text regulation that I think are worth noting as we debate this. First of all, and I, and I know I commented on it during the public hearing, this is sort of unique in that this regulation would not be usable anywhere else in town. In that section, the proposed section twenty-nine point four says, "An ARHZ, which is, what was this, adaptive reuse housing zone, shall be located only on land fronting on Ferry Boulevard and Riverview Place, having between point five and one zero Wakers." This is literally the, the definition of spot zoning, you're carving it out for one particular lot. It would not work on any other street anywhere else in the town of Stratford, by this simple sentence there. Now, I asked the attorney, I says, are, has this ever been challenged? No, because basically, it more or less fulfills the need in order to create a narrow scope place of where something is going to occur. And there will probably be times that, you know, having been on this board for several years, where I would have loved to have written a regulation that said, "This is only in effect for this one square area there." But by and large, it's something that is not permitted in our regulations, it is, so, you know, it, this is not something that would affect the rest of town, this is talking about one particular piece of land within the confines of our town. So let's just keep that in mind. Second of all, the, while I see lots of positive things, that if you were to utilize it for creating, creation of a residential development, there would obviously be something we'd want to continue, have in here, especially when we discuss parking and so on. But there is one area of this regulation which I, I really do take into question. And, I'm just trying, give me one second here to find it, because I just missed it. It basically, what concerns me is the exemption that is carved out in here, exempts this piece of property from conformance with section twenty, which is our special case regulation. And I'm just trying to find the exact place where that's located here, suddenly I'm having a hard time finding it. Just one second. Well, I know it's in here, but we had, I had asked specifically about that during the public hearing, because I was concerned about that this is, could set a precedent down the road for any other types of regulations, by basically doing a set aside for themselves, that's saying we're no longer subject to section twenty. And just to review, what is section twenty? If it were subject to section twenty, which we're all familiar with, "Propose you shall be in conformance of other requirements of the district in which it's located, in addition to other standard prescribed by these regulations, location, size, intensity should be compatible, conformance with the town plan of conservation and development, design, location, specific details of the proposed use shall not adversely affect safety in the streets, nor increase traffic congestion in the area, nor interfere with the pattern of highway circulation," and so on. "The emission of noise like smoke, odor, gas, dust, vibration shall not adversely affect land, water, or air quality. The proposed use shall not adversely affect the tax valuation of neighboring properties, and shall not create any police and fire hazards, and also, it would be subject to approval by four commissioners as opposed to three." So, that's an interesting set aside, because that's a hefty standard that we impose on a great many of these types of developments. Were it, were it subject to that, there might be actual concerns here. We are dealing with an extremely narrow street, Riverview Place, so much so that we've heard testimony that the garbage trucks and so on have to go in and back out. That seems like an amazing change in the pattern of highway circulation than one would expect. The traffic is in a unique place also, because not only is this facing one narrow road, Riverview Place, it's also facing Ferry Boulevard, which is a one-way street with high traffic speed, part of a state route, and it also is a many people use this as they come off of Interstate ninety-five and come onto the road. So, with all these factors in here, you start seeing, this is a situation where the traffic pattern and flow, and I know we've seen our, our traffic studies that say it won't increase all that, these are things that have to be considered as to whether this is an appropriate area for this type of a development. And now, with the set aside, we don't actually have that anymore. So, the question is, do we want to adopt the regulation as, as it's presented? And, quite frankly, there are some serious problems with the regulation as presented. That this commission acting in its legislative capacity, which is what we're doing, has to weigh. And I realize we have the state statute, we're very familiar, we've sat through a number of these eight dash thirty Gs, and we know the complexities, and we know the realities of this. But if we don't comment on these and make them part of our consideration, then we are neglecting our duties as elected zoning commissioners to make sure that we adopt legislation that is in the best interests of our citizens, and the protection of our land, and the safety and well-being of our citizens. So, those are my thoughts on the regulation as presented, thank you.
Thank you. One of the thoughts I had had was hopefully looking for a reduction in the amount of the apartments that, that were proposed to lesser the amount of cars, which would also help in the, the traffic and the flow, and that particular street coming out of, and because I live in the neighborhood, I'm much more aware of what, you know, is going on. Frequently walking up and down Ferry Boulevard. You come from the center of town, and you're coming up Ferry Boulevard, past Polly's, the road has a slight crest to it. So you, you know, as they speed up, it does become a hazard coming out of Riverview Place. Adding additional cars, I don't think would be, you know, all that good of an idea, I think you're adding to the, the hazard. Visitor parking, obviously, was a concern of mine early on. When they had, you know, proposing twenty-four units, which would require, I believe, thirty-six parking spaces, they only allow for four visitors. I personally would think, would like to see a lot less units, allowing for more visitor parking. Many of the other issues around that, I think we, we can deal with, you know, not saying that nothing should go there, but I think a reduction would definitely help in the, the safety of the neighborhood, and the, the traffic flow, and coming out of Riverview. Anything else anybody would like to add to that? Let's see.
I just wanted to make a point of clarification, as of November of two thousand seventeen, per direction from the town attorney, eight dash thirty G applications, it's unlawful for them to be considered a special case application. Therefore, the amendment was changed, the town made its own text amendment, so that eight dash thirty G applications are required as a site plan review. And that's just basically to remain consistent with the statute. And also gives direction, gave direction for our staff on how we're supposed to advertise these applications correctly. So that change happened as of last year, under the town, with an, by an application from the town.
Okay, with all that being said, it's our pleasure here, anybody have any suggestions, or recommendations, or motions, or? Okay. Anybody like to take a stab at the text amendment?
I think that was what the motion was made for, was the text amendment?
For discussion, you want to make?
Well, motion, I made a motion to approve, you know, for the purposes of discussion, but it was still a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hendrick, which I believe sec, was seconded by Mr. Solhavy.
I might be in the same line, I happen to agree that, that one section that talked about this, just a text amendment now, for the riverside, is not, you know, consistent to the entire town. And I was looking at something, I did not see that, everything else I knew. But I was looking at something that might help us avoid this consistent battery of eight thirty Gs that we get, because we don't have enough units of which to have as an alternative. Hence, this text amendment I saw was maybe a possibility to help us move in that. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit, or we can discuss it later. But I definitely agree that, in that one section, I did overlook that, where it was defined just for river, or riverside, wasn't really appropriate for anyplace else in the town. That was my only comment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that no wonder I couldn't find it, because I know it was brought up in debate that we were taking that out, but obviously that one must have been corrected at some point, so. Yeah, but the fact of the matter stays the same, is that it's an intense, by the sheer number of units presented, it's an intense use for an area that has some severe limitations. I think I, I share the sentiment that you had, that, you know, had that number gone down, we probably could get somewhere. Because when you have those limitations, you have to mitigate it. And the easiest way to mitigate it is by reducing the number of cars that would be in that area. You know, I even look, and not, it's not necessarily spot on for, for an argument, but, you know, in many cases, when we've done these types of developments, we've actually even mandated that there be areas for recreation and so on. And, there's none on this property, because it's so dense, and it's on a busy roads. And, you know, if you could have set aside some of that building for passive recreation within, you know, and obviously, we'd reduce the number of units that would be available, you know, and I, and I understand full well that, you know, the intent of the development is for, is to be profitable and so on. But there, there would be a possibility here to do something, but in its present form, I don't see a good faith effort to mitigate the issues that were brought up in good faith that exist due to the uniqueness of the site, and that's what I'm concerned about, thank you.
Seeing nothing else, we'll call this to a vote. To approve the text amendment? As is, I believe, we, we have no stipulations on it, we're just not going to change it. Motion by Mr. Hendrick to, do you want a roll call vote, or do we, just voices fine? Motion by Mr. Hendrick, seconded by Mr. Solhavy, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? No, passes or fails five zero. Yes, Mr. Hendrick?
Just for, for the purposes of, I guess, doing this properly, I'll make a motion, six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates changed the zone from a C eight zone to the proposed adaptive reuse zone, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick to approve six oh eight Ferry Boulevard zone change, do I have a second? By Mr. Solhavy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hendrick.
Since the text amendment did not pass, then, then, you know, I would, I would ask that the members of the committee also vote this proposal down, because it's contingent upon the, the earlier proposal.
Okay, we have a motion to, motion to approve. Motion approved, seconded by Mr. Solhavy, yes. All those in favor of the approval of six oh eight Ferry Boulevard zone change, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Nay. Denied, five zero. And, six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Phillips?
For the, just for the expediency, I know you have more thoughts on this. Would you guide us in terms of what your thoughts would like it to be, or what you would, what, how you, since you live there, what you envision?
I.
Oh, I thought we had a motion already for, for discussion.
No, just, they were just taken off the table.
Motion to discuss.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, to discuss, for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Hendrick, for discussion, to approve for discussion.
All in favor?
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
No, we're, we just said for discussion.
On the, on the third unit.
Just for discussion, I, and the question was, I just wanted to give our chairman an opportunity to sort of lay out his thoughts of what he would think would be appropriate, so that we could further the discussion a little more efficiently.
Well, my personal opinion would feel that the area probably could handle another twenty-four cars, which would be approximately sixteen units. I think that would be something that would be amicable to the, to the neighbors. From, at least the feedback that I'm hearing from, that they're not happy, but they do want to see it being used, they want to see that building put back to something a lot better looking than what it is. Like, I could definitely support at least sixteen units, I would, I would definitely be in favor of that.
Any other thoughts in terms, any other thoughts in terms of design of the outside of the building? Anything you had mentioned, some things like that?
We can't even put that into stipulation, how I would like the outside of the building to look, it's just, you know, they've, they've come to their conclusion of the best that they can do, and that's what they're going to do, and, you know.
Okay.
I have to believe that our limitations are, or, are, are what they are.
Would you like some of those, that space to be used as common space, recreational space, any thoughts in that?
I would like to see that, I can't see, see us telling them to do that, but I would like to see a lot more common space there. I'd like to see a nice green area out on the side for a couple picnic tables, and a couple of cookout places for them, very similar to eleven eleven Stratford Avenue. But, you know, they're just, I believe, just trying to jam way too much into a small, small area. You know, I think it could be viable, and I think it could be really, you know, something that'll really look nice, but, you know, with a lot less traffic.
I'd like to see what that would look like. I, I understand the desire to reduce, I agree we should reduce it some, I wasn't settled on a number, whether sixteen, eighteen, or something, but twenty-four was a bit much, even down to the twenty-two. My original number was somewhere around twenty, but that's not necessarily a line in the sand. I would like to see what that looks like, even at sixteen, or eighteen, or whatever the applicant can do before just sort of blindly saying, okay, you could do that, without knowing, we may not even like that layout, we might not like the cars. Because even in the last design we looked at, we made some changes and some recommendations about how things, the parking should be, where the garbage should be, where the greenery would be, whether we even like the green space, or the common floor, so. I would like to see if there's a mechanism available, so that we still have that ability to be able to look at. Is there a possibility with that?
I would believe that, you know, from what I'm envisioning here, with six, only sixteen units and twenty-four cars, you're, you can actually have more of a green area to the back part of the property, so you'd probably be able to eliminate some of the parking spaces back there. And with less cars, you're going to obviously see a lot less traffic and a lot less congestion in the parking lot. You're not going to be able to do anything with the building, because the building is what it is, they're not going to take down half the building for you. So it's, they're going to have to work with.
Can we limit parking irregardless of the number of units that are there?
Well, I'm not trying to limit them, I'm just.
No, that's a question, I'm probably set for the town attorney, or?
No, I don't believe so.
Can you limit the amount of parking?
In other words, if they had twenty units, but we said, this is how many spaces you're going to get, period. Whether it adds up to twenty, or not adds up to twenty.
Sure, well, that could be a part of a condition, and if there was an approval, that would be a part of a condition of approval. I mean, it could certainly be stated, you know, as a reason for denial, that, you know, it exceeded X number of spaces, whatever that number happens to be in your mind. That way, it's on the record, and you've stated what, what that number is, and, you know, the applicant certainly has an opportunity to, to remedy that, if they choose to, to go that avenue.
So could we stipulate, because parking is the bottom line here. Could we say, look, we're going to give you, I'll pick a number for conversation's sake, not officially, we're going to give you twenty spaces, period. I don't care how many apartments you come up with, you're getting twenty spaces, or we're going to give you twenty spaces, you can have your twenty-four apartments, but you're getting twenty spaces and nothing more. Is that irrational, because people will just park outside? Is that pretty much the case?
I would think people would be parking on the street in any old place.
Any old place, okay, I'm thinking out loud, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, oh.
Okay. I, I don't have anything.
Anything further on this one? Maybe?
I, I think in my previous remarks, I, I've laid out some of the things that, that we were hoping for, and, you know, just, just some history with this. You know, this is the third meeting that we've had in this, there was plenty of public input. It, it's unfortunate that, when we're dealing with affordable housing issues, that it becomes this confrontational. Like anything else, there has to be some accommodation between the zoning boards and the applicants, and that's the way we generally deal with them. It, it, it's a missed opportunity, because I think even the people that lived in the adjoining condos identified the fact that this building has been vacant for some time. There's not a clear sense of what to do with it, they've, there's been several attempts of, to, to, to find a remedy for this situation. Certainly, one cannot deny that there is housing in the area, I mean, it's, it's in a very dense area. And, you know, adaptive reuse is something that we've employed in other areas of town. It's consistent with other decisions that we've made to try to make, take buildings that have evolved from their original use into something else. But it's almost like, you know, I was thinking about this, and it's like, almost, it's almost like if you're trying to get into one, a pair of pants that's one size too small for you, you may get it there, but it's probably not a good idea for everybody, there's going to be some pain on the other There's going to be some pain on the other side, so. So, you know, it's up to the hands of the applicants. If they, obviously, they have an opportunity, if they can make some substantial changes, you know, maybe there's a possibility to come to a meeting of the minds, but right now, as it presented, we're in a pair of pants that's one size too small for us right now. Thank you.
Mr. Hendrick?
I mean, so, when I look at this, you know, parking space on the street, a couple issues I see, and, and it's not the applicant's fault, but, but I think, and I, I wish, when they came to this, we could create regulations that force neighbors to behave in a, in a more, for lack of a better word, neighborly fashion. We have a condominium complex next door that doesn't allow commercial trucks to make deliveries, which causes congestion on the street. It was up to me, I would pass a regulation that required any deliveries to that condo to be done on, on site. You know, they've kind of dumped their problems on, onto the rest of the neighborhood. We also have a business in the area called Polly's, which, although they have a big parking spa, parking lot, they don't provide adequate parking for their, for their clients. And because of that, they are forced or choose to park on, on the street. So, if I could pack, pass a regulation, I would limit Polly's, although I wouldn't want to limit a business, but I would limit Polly's to the same, perhaps, parking requirements that we place on, on applications like this one here. So I think because of those two, we've kind of gotten into a crunch, where we've created an unsafe situation on a road, because the neighbors don't behave in a neighborly fashion, and are behaving in a way that, that might not follow the regulations if they were forced to come before us. That being said, it is there. You know, I'd love to see it go perhaps to the traffic authority and, and have permit parking on the road, where only people with permits, that permits only offered to residents are allowed to park on that street. I like Ms. Phillips' idea about the, the, the pull-in parking for commercial deliveries. Sort of carve out a, a space where any commercial deliveries to that apartment complex would have a spot to park. And it, and signage placed that, you know, this is only for commercial deliveries. It's not for dropping your groceries off, it's not for, you know, picking somebody up. It's solely for commercial deliveries, which would ease that, and which would create a neighborly, a neighborly type behavior. Again, I think if we could resolve those other two issues, that would resolve a lot of these issues. If, you know, a little foresight had gone into the planning prior to putting the road there, they wouldn't have created such a narrow, dead-end road, onto a busy road like Ferry Boulevard, so. You know, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know if we're allowed to amend this application as it is now, and, and reduce the units to something that might, might appease Mr. Salhavy and Mr. Fredette. You know, we can, we can, if that is something we can do, maybe we can get a, a motion or amendment to do that. You know, I, I, they've met our parking requirements, we, we, they came in short. Then they met them, it is an 830G application, so it doesn't necessarily have to follow all the, the rules and criteria outside of perhaps public safety, and if public safety is compromised by the, the congestion created, that might be an issue for denial, but if, if we can, and we can amendment, amend it to reduce it, then, then perhaps one of you gentlemen would like to offer that up, and, and we can discuss that. But again, I, I just, I feel bad for them, but I, and, and I, and I'm not happy with the way that, you know, the condo complex or Polly's have behaved, and kind of shirk their responsibility to deal with their own problems and not dump them on the neighbors, and come up with an answer like, oh, well, there's nothing I can do, because there is. Thank you.
Well, do we have a, do we have an answer here? Do we have a suggestion? We have a motion? Yeah. I'd be more than happy to make a motion to, with the change of the amount of units to, from 24 to 16, I'll make a motion to approve with certain stipulations.
Just a parliamentary inquiry, is this an amendment to the, what is this?
Originally a motion to approve with discussion.
Okay. So this is, you're proposing an amendment to that original motion? To reduce down to 16, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll second that amendment.
Yes.
Before we amend it, or before we vote on that amendment, I would like that to also include the carved-out space that Ms. Phillips had suggested for the commercial parking.
Okay. So we have the, put that under stipulations? The carved-out space that you want for the commercial spot, which will be marked for commercial parking only?
It was, it was that plus a clear identification of the parking space location, so that we can identify the cars that belong to that complex, as opposed to those that don't. Because as you said, there are other people who are outside of that complex, who are used to parking there, and we want to ensure that they don't continue to do that and get included in that.
I would think that they're going to police their own.
They, they probably will, but this way it makes it clear, and the vice versa. If they've got cars that belong in that lot, and they're on the street someplace where they don't belong, people will see. So something that, you know, usually most building management give you a car tag, so that you can park there, or they have reserved spots, one of the two.
Along with the reduction of 16, down to 16 units, I have a couple, I have four conditions if this project is to be approved. Yes, Mister Hendrick?
Maybe you can incorporate, instead of your amended motion, maybe you can incorporate those four stipulations, plus all the other comment, into one amendment that we would place onto the original motion to approve.
You want to withdraw the original motion, is that what you're saying?
I don't know if that's what the town attorney would suggest.
I thought that's what we were doing, but okay.
I know there were some comments about the parking authority, and whether they could make that, you know, road, you know, a neighborhood parking area. I think they, they do that in a number of different towns. So it sounds like what you're looking to do is to, to modify and approve the application, but I think you've got time, if you, you know, I know you generally do vote quickly, but you don't have to do that, you know, so, whatever your pleasure is.
And I think alternatively, you could probably either withdraw the initial motion to approve, and then just start over with all the, with all the new conditions of approval, if that's the way the board wishes to go.
I think that's the cleanest way of doing it, is to withdraw it, and then, I. Is there, Mr. Chairman, is there a way to ask a question to the town attorney?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I know it's not appropriate in, in administrative to get any feedback from the applicant or their attorneys, but is there any way that they can communicate to you, if they have some thoughts that they feel that should be included in terms of compromises that they might have?
I wouldn't do that as part of this, this process. They do have the right to come back with a, with a modified application, so if, and that is immediate, and I believe without cost.
Yes.
So, you know, perhaps the thing to do is for you to decide what you want to do. As I said, you could decide this time, or you could, you know, put it over a meeting, and then they could come back with whatever their changes might be.
Would agree with Mrs. Salhavy, we've been on this now for a couple of months, and I think it's not fair to the applicant to keep holding them, so I think they deserve some kind of a decision, one way or the other, and then they can come back directly and quickly, and, you know, maybe offer up something different. That's just my thought.
That's fair.
Okay, then I will withdraw my, no, not withdraw, I'm, what, how would you like to handle the? I made the motion.
Actually, I think it will, the easiest way to do is, I'll withdraw my second, so that you can restate your motion, so.
Okay, so.
Done.
Make a motion to approve with 16 units, with the cutout on Riverview Place, as Ms. Phillips had suggested. A six-foot white vinyl fence on the property line between the house immediately behind the proposed project and going up the border against the condominiums. Six-foot-high adult white, or winter aphrodite on the property line, also in the same area. Move the dumpster location out of the spot to the street side, closer to the street. Another suggestion would have been to open up the second entrance, another additional 10 feet, to allow for trucks to back in to turn around. Open up the second entrance 10 feet, to allow for this to back, for trucks to back into the, and turn around. Yep, so, yeah, the fence all the way around, aphrodites can go up.
Let's wait, please, make sure he's done.
That house, open up that 10 feet to move the dumpster. Yes, and. Then we'll be dumpsters up here. Okay, Mr. Salhavy?
Are you, you're.
I'm done.
Okay, and then I second the motion as presented.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Salhavy. All those in favor, say.
Just one, just one quick question before we vote. So, with the defeat of the, of the proposed text amendment, this is now being approved under our existing regulations and the state 830G statute, is that correct? I just want to make sure we have the authority to actually approve it this way, that's what I'm asking.
Correct. It's being approved under the statute of eight dash 30G.
Okay.
Not under this, the local zoning regulations.
Okay. So then, just my only comment there, so, is that with these amendments that were presented, I think we have offered a good faith effort to mitigate the distinct issues that affect that site. And with the reduction in the units, this is more workable than what was originally presented to us, so I, I, I will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Hendrick?
And, and I also will, will agree with Mr. Salhavy, and as I stated earlier, I, I think that, that because of existing conditions there, there are some safety concerns there. And I think one of those is the ability for emergency vehicles and, and just basic service vehicles to get in and out of that road if, you know, if we allow the condition, if we allow the condition to go further. Again, if Polly's wasn't there, if the, if the condo allowed commercial, maybe it wouldn't be as much of a, as much of an issue, but it is, and, and we can't change that. So it does present somewhat of a safety concern, so I think, I think we have allowed the project to go forward, but allowed also safety to prevail in, in, in the, in the surrounding neighborhood, so.
Thank you. With all that being said, on the motion, and we have a second, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Other work, looking for the approval of the minutes from Oc-, from October. Thank you, guys. Approval of the minutes from our October 30th, 2018 meeting. Motion by Mister Hendrick, seconded by Mister Salhavy. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any discussion on anything?
Mr. Chairman, we, uh, can't send a review, Six Oh Eight Ferry Boulevard?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve or to amend, uh, the, the application to be for 16 years of enforcement.
Yes, we have a motion by Mister Hendrick.
Second.
Seconded by Mister Salhavy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Zoning enforcement study, complaints?
No.
Nothing?
No, Chairman.
Accessory apartment applications, we have nothing. Sediment and erosion control applications, not required. Planning projects, other items? Goal settings, nothing. Motion to adjourn? By Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mister Vacola. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you very much, everyone.